All right, welcome back. Next we're going to hear from Dr. Chris Hunter, Director of Health Services Department, to introduce a presentation regarding improvements at the Animal Services Building. And this has to do primarily with concerns that we've heard and about what we can do to ventilate and improve the conditions at our animal shelter. Dr. Hunter?
Sure, thank you. I'm going to do this presentation in conjunction with Sarah Flynn-Cramer, who's our manager of Capital Projects. So I'm going to give the overview, and then I'm going to hand it over to Sarah to discuss the existing kennel conditions, the air conditioning assessment that was performed, the options that were laid out for us, briefly discuss the interaction yard and shade and turf project, then I'm going to come back on for summary and for actions requested. So I'll begin with the overview. So the Orange County Animal Services Shelter provides services for stray, lost, relinquished, or quarantined animals. We're an open-admission shelter, and that means that no animal is turned away regardless of the condition of that animal when it's brought to us. And that's an important thing for us. We collaborate with dozens of pet rescues and volunteers. There is no way that we could run the facility the way we do without some of our amazing volunteers and rescue partners, and I think it's important to note that. And over the last several years, we've experienced an incredibly large increase in visitors. We've expanded our hours and our days of operation. We've improved our adoption rates really dramatically, and I'm going to show you some numbers here on the next slide. So as you can see here, over the last five years, our number of impounds has dropped by 13 percent, while our number of adoptions has increased by 75 percent. Number of sterilization surgeries has gone up 57 percent, and our number of visitors has increased remarkably, up 45 percent. Last year, over 100,000 visitors came to our Animal Services Shelter. And the improvement of all these metrics really says a lot about how hard the Animal Services Division has been working and how hard those volunteers and rescue partners have been working with us. But I think it also speaks volumes as to the changing scope of what our operation has become. Animal Services at its inception was mainly an enforcement agency, and at this point particularly the shelter is thought of as a community resource for animal welfare and a very busy adoption center. People from all walks of life come to our facility now to adopt animals regardless of whether they could afford to buy one because they think it's the right thing to do, and we agree with that sentiment. And because of that, we have thousands and thousands of adoptions now coming through, and that means thousands of surgeries for our veterinarians. Unfortunately, the current facility wasn't necessarily constructed with that operational function in mind. It was built in 1987, and at the time, it was a state-of-the-art facility. Over time, as the scope of our operations have changed, there's been a number of capital improvement projects that have added additional modular units. We've converted one of the old carports into a facility, and what we're left with is essentially a mishmash of different buildings that are loosely connected, some of which are air-conditioning, some of which are not. The discussion here is mostly going to focus on our housing for dogs. Our general dog population is held in Building 300. Building 300 has 50 large dog kennels, 15 small dog kennels, and 15 extended kennels, which essentially are kennels that have a clear front rather than the bars for animals that might be a little bit nippy and that we don't want people putting their fingers in. We also house dogs in the ISO building, our isolation building, and also dogs in our clinic area. Both of those buildings are air-conditioned. Building 300, however, was not designed to be air-conditioned initially and still isn't. So over the last several years, we've had concerns raised by citizens about the idea of how hot it gets in this area in Building 300. At first, we went and began to look at improving ventilation to this building. There were some improvements that we looked at from a study that was done. As the concerns increased, however, with the idea of installing air conditioning in this building, we were asked by the Animal Services Advisory Board to go ahead and perform a feasibility study to look at what would happen if we had to or needed to or wanted to air-condition Building 300. So we initiated the kennel building existing condition and air conditioning assessment, which we're going to talk about in detail in the future here. And we also started looking at what similar agencies were doing around the state in similar counties and our neighboring counties. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Sarah, and then I'll come back to discuss the summary at the end.
Hi, I'd like to introduce myself as Sarah Flynn-Cramer, the manager of Capital Projects, but I also want you to know I have a rescue heart, and I do a lot of animal rescue myself. So these projects that involve animal services, I pay a lot of attention to, in addition to all the projects we manage for the county. In fact, when I first started with the county back in early 2003, the shelter started a program for fostering to get some of the animals out of the shelter into private homes to be able to help the ones that are sick and injured. I joined up, and since that time, I've fostered over 800 animals for Orange County Animal Services in my home. So the subject's really near and dear to me.
Not all at once.
Not all at once, over the years, right. And then also with my dog rescue work, it takes me across the state to different shelters. So I'm very familiar with shelters across the state, different facilities, and for the age of this facility, Orange County's facility is better than most. So as you can see, this building was never designed for air conditioning. It was designed to be ventilated, and it has the high ceilings and the open space. And it was designed to be ventilated. It does not have insulated walls, nor it was designed to be, to have the ventil-- oh, excuse me. And the ductwork is not insulated. If we were to try to blow cool air into the ductwork now, it would sweat. In the next picture, you can see where the existing ductwork is. The red is the ductwork that runs down the center, and those center kennels are in the inside of the building. And then where the blue fans are, you can see those outside kennels are actually outside the building. And I'll show you that in a minute so you can understand better how complicated air conditioning this building will become. Only those two rows of kennels on the inside are actually completely enclosed by a building. So here's the door that separates the interior kennels from the exterior kennels, and that's how they're able to manage the dog population, and it makes it easier for cleaning, and allows the dogs to go from inside the building to the outside. And from inside here, you can see that the building has a, just a shed roof, and the building is open to the outside, and so those kennels currently do not have any ventilation. From outside, you can see the same kennels that are open to the outside, and you can also start to see into a courtyard that's not being utilized at this time. Here's a better picture of the courtyard. This is the west side of the building, and this is where we would, if we did an air conditioning project, potentially need to put equipment down on the ground. So it would eliminate a possibility of doing something else with this big, open, green space. On the east side of the building, we have interaction yards now, and this is a place where people can take the animals out to interact with them, meet them, and get the dogs exercised. It has shade structures, and there's opportunity here to improve this side as well. So that's how the building looks now, and we initiated an assessment to look at how we could bring air conditioning into the building. So in the 2010 Association of Shelter Veterinarians recommendation for ventilation of this type of facility is to have a minimum of 10 air changes per hour, and this is important for the health and well-being of the animals and for disease control, which is very important. The recommendation is to have 100% outside air, so there's no partial recirculation of the air. These 10 air exchanges are required if we air-condition the building too. And with 100% air, outside air requirement, it means that we have to have very large equipment to be able to cool down that amount of outside air. So the existing ductwork and diffuser layout doesn't really work for air conditioning, and it's focused more on the comfort of the people. You can see that the diffusers are right there on the center aisle, and there really isn't much that extends over to the kennels themselves. So right now, it's focused more on the people and not so much on the doors, but we can change that. On these next couple of aerials, north will be to your right. So this is an aerial that shows the existing building. You can see the site is really congested. The building we're talking about, looking at air conditioning, is the Building 300 building. And for this project, the new electrical service, if we did air conditioning, would be required, and the red dot there is a potential location for the service. This layout shows you where we could potentially put the equipment. The blue checks are where we could put the equipment down on the ground, which would be in that courtyard area, where that's the potential to have maybe the interaction yards like we have on the other side. Alternatively, the equipment could go up on the roof, which would require some major structural changes. And also on this slide, you can see Building 400, which is a carport area where the dogs first come in to the shelter. So if we look at the equipment, this slide shows you that the roof equipment would go up and require a roof to be built and a wall on the side, and we're essentially, in order to accommodate this building, a building outside the building. For the air conditioning, if we do the air conditioning without the 100% air like you would do at your home, the air conditioning, the air comes in, you cool it down, goes into the building, and most of the air is recirculated back into the air conditioning units. So the air conditioning units are only having to deal with and condition air that's been recirculated and is already cooled down and dehumidified. What would happen in our scenario for the air conditioning, because of the outside, 100% outside air requirement, we would have to bring the air in, cool it down, put it into the building, exhaust it out, and that cycle would happen 10 times an hour. So it's a tremendous load on the equipment, and it tremendous, it requires the equipment to be that much bigger as a result. So we also looked at what it would take to do an improved ventilation project. Even though our current system meets code and it meets the requirements, we know there's room for improvement. So we looked at what we could do. We could replace all of the existing fans, and instead of just recirculating the air through the shelter 10 times an hour, we could increase it to 15 times an hour. We could also do it with silencers because the dog's hearing is sensitive, and by doing that, we would do vibration or insulation. And we would also want to provide diffusers at each kennel, at the interior kennels and the exterior kennels, and then install some sort of air cleaning technology for disease control. And with that, the animals and the people in the shelter in that building would feel about 5 to 10 degrees cooler. And I'll show you what that would look like. Here, you can see the red extension down. That would be ventilation duct dropping down into the interior kennels. And then this shows you that we would also do the same for the exterior kennels, and currently, they don't have any direct ventilation at all. So before we look at other alternatives, or before we look at the cost of these, we did want to let you know that we looked at other alternatives, like putting a small unit into each kennel. This would be hard because of the maintenance and also because of the filter changes and the way the shelter cleans with liquids, et cetera. It would be very cumbersome, and it would not be something we could do for the outdoor kennels. We looked at evaporative cooling, but Florida's too humid. It has success in drier environments, but it doesn't really work with a swamp cooler-type system in Florida. And then we looked at radiant cooling, where you cool the floors or cool the walls, and because, again, a condensation, it just gets too slippery, and also for disease control, that's a problem. We also considered misting, but the same problems. Misting just introduces water into the facility and is a problem for disease control and for safety. So when we looked at the options, keep in mind that this is a 24-hour facility. It's used every day, and it has a lot of heavy use. It's really ending, nearing the end of its useful life. A lot of the costs that you're going to see for the air conditioning have to do with actually making major changes to the building to make the building be able to be air-conditioned. So again, it's like we're building a building outside the building to do that. So, excuse me. So here's an aerial just to refamiliarize you with the site. This is where we have the Building 300, which is our main building. Building 400 is where the dogs come in. Either the units would be mounted in the courtyard where it's blue or up on the roof where it's red. The first option is to do the ventilation upgrade, where we would increase the ventilation to 15 air changes per hour. We would provide a direct duct to each kennel, inside and outside. The initial cost would be about $300,000, and the annual maintenance cost would be approximately $4,000. The second option would be to air-condition all of the kennels and Building 400 with ground-mounted equipment, and that cost initially would be $2 million, and the annual cost to maintain it would be $53,000. And then similarly, we would air-condition everything, put the equipment up on the roof, and the initial cost would be $3 million with an annual cost of $53,000. The consultant gave us two other options to consider, but they only air-conditioned half of the building, and that wasn't practical for our population, so we couldn't consider those as actual options. So I'd like to just take this opportunity too to talk about an opportunity that we have to maybe do some improvements in the courtyard area. If there's no equipment in the courtyard, we would have the possibility of having the same sort of interaction yards that we have on the east side now, on the west side in the courtyard, and we would probably do more sails so that it's more completely shaded, and with that, come back to this east side that you see in the right-hand picture and be able to add shade sails there. And those will help cool the direct sunlight that's feeding into the kennel area. So I'll turn it back over to Dr. Hunter to give you the options.
Thanks, Sarah. So in conclusion, the result of the air conditioning assessment suggests that it may be cost-prohibitive for us to air-condition a general dog population building largely because of the existing structure lacks the support to be able to really do this in an efficient manner. However, there does appear to be an option for us to improve ventilation upgrades that could make the existing building more comfortable for both the dogs and the visitors by changing that temperature down 5 to 10 degrees to the way it feels. We recognize right now that the building, it is hot particularly in these summer months, and that it is uncomfortable for the humans, and that although it is not dangerous, and I want to emphasize that we have not seen significant heat illness or deaths in our kennel in the dogs in the summertime. But nonetheless, you know, we recognize that it's important for us to try to improve the comfort there. We also see an opportunity to improve the existing courtyard by implementing more interaction yards and more shade for those yards. That allows the dogs that are outside to have shades, as well as the shade, as well as the humans and the volunteers interacting with them. Those yards have been really popular for us, and we think have very much helped improve our adoption numbers because it allows people to interact with the animals in a more natural environment. So we think that those things would really be beneficial to us. We have gone back and compared what our shelter is like compared to the similar county shelters. We have, you know, local shelters, one right across the street, the Pet Alliance, which is, the general dog population is not air-conditioned there. We also have shelters in both to the north, Seminole Lake, and Osceola Counties to the south, that's similar to ours, have partial air conditioning, but the general dog population is not air-conditioned there either. Both Hillsboro and Palm Beach Counties have shelters built at the same time period as ours, and neither of them provide air conditioning to the general dog population. Broward County is currently in the process of building a brand-new facility, which will be air-conditioned. Miami-Dade just opened their brand-new facility, I believe, about two weeks ago, and the whole building is air-conditioned. I think that, you know, the staff in looking at all this, the reality of what we've seen is this, is that the community expectation for what this shelter, the purpose the shelter serves now, has changed significantly over the last 30 years. When we look at it now, the industry standards have changed along with it. It is much more of an adoption center. It's an area where I think we need to change that focus. We're not convinced necessarily that we can perform this efficiently and, you know, in a great manner without the ability to look into a new facility completely, because at this point, we need to look at not only what the scope is of our operation now, but what that scope will be for the future, for the next 20, 30 years. And we believe that that scope is going to continue to be as an adoption center for these animals and a place for welfare and care of the animals, as such that the facility that we have now wasn't really meant to be. So our hope is that we'd like to come back to the board in several months to have an in-depth discussion about looking at the options for a brand-new facility that would better help us achieve these goals in a more cost-effective and efficient manner. But in the meantime, the action requested for this particular moment is the approval to move forward with the design and construction of both the Animal Services Building 300 ventilation upgrade project and the adjacent interaction shade yard and turf project.
Thank you. Before I open it up to comments and questions from board members, I want to commend the whole team for the work that's been done in evaluating this. I know I've, you know, coming at this as a layperson to some extent, certainly when it comes to air conditioning and retrofitting buildings, have thrown a lot of things at the team, like, isn't there some sort of a makeshift, you know, yes, it wouldn't be terribly cost-efficient, but isn't there a way to have air conditioning units on each run? And the idea of misters, you know, went through my mind. I was pretty sure that wasn't going to work because of disease and whatnot, but they have looked at everything that I've thought of and things I didn't think of, like, you know, is there a way to cool the floor? And I've learned, and I can tell from just some of the reactions to my right over here, I think we've all learned a lot just watching the presentation about what goes into air conditioning a kennel. I mean, the idea that 10 times an hour, completely fresh air has to come in, totally different than what happens in your home. You're recycling, you know, your air's cool, and you're recycling cool air, and that's an entirely different equation than what it takes to bring in cool air over and over and over again. So it was, it's a much larger undertaking than I imagined. But I support the recommended action here today as a temporary improvement, but in our conversations, I definitely believe that the direction that we need to go is a new shelter. And it was my intent to come in and here and ask for the board's support on this, but to direct the staff to come back to us in the October-November timeframe with a full analysis of what it would take to build that and how that could be incorporated in our budget. I think, Dr. Hunter, you've nailed it, that the shelter has really changed from what it once was in a very rural county where the goal was, you know, animals that were stray and had to be picked up, were picked up. But that's very different than what we're seeing today. I commend everyone who's been involved in the transition of this shelter. I mean, you look at the numbers coming in versus the numbers that are being adopted out, the number of spays. This is really a phenomenal turnaround, and it's a tribute to the team that we have in place. It is a tribute to the volunteers, the foster care, the foster agencies, and people like Paul Ween and his PR campaign for our animals, all of it coming together. But there's still a lot of room for improvement. And one is the physical shelter, having an air-conditioned shelter that meets the expectations of our community, and the other is making sure that the care that we're giving meets the expectations of our community. And that involves some budgetary considerations that will need to come back to this board. And at this point, we don't have a number on that, and I, it would be, I think, the $300,000 and whatever the additional cost is for the, what's the word for it, the sales?
Yeah, I believe that actually will include the yard shade and turf project.
Yeah, I think that that's a good investment, absolutely, to bridge the gap between where we are and where we will be with, hopefully, a new shelter. So with that, I'm going to open it up. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think that your discussion answered a lot of my questions as far as, you know, what would be the cost for a new building, what would be the, we don't know yet, what would be the horizon. We're not quite sure, because it does make a lot of sense to spend a lot of money on upgrades, and we're then going to, you know, put in a new facility. The one question I had, just for my edification and possibly the public, are there any, do you have any information as far as, you know, the tolerance of dogs for heat? And a lot of times, we might impose our own
Sure.
human preferences. And I'm always amazed at how my dog would go out in the dead of winter when it's just freezing, and the cat will run out and be perfectly content.
Right.
So what is her tolerance, and how does that differ from?
I'm not a veterinarian, but I can tell you, you know, the ambient temperature of a dog, the regular temperature, is significantly higher than
I used to be a vet tag. Does that count?
Yeah, see?
Always got to throw that in.
So, you know, again, I think it's difficult to kind of impart the way we might feel and the way an animal feels. There's certainly times where you can, where it's very clear and animals in pain or uncomfortable or sick. When it comes to, you know, certain types of animals, when it comes to hot and cold, you know, I grew up with German Shepherds, and, you know, our dog would run around the snow and be outside all day and would not want to come in when it was cold out, and we had to drag her in, and it was probably more our preference than hers. I think with heat, you know, you see dogs panting. That is part of how they, how they deal with heat in general. And, but, you know, what we don't see in our, in our shelter is that kind of temperature you see in a, that soars in a car with the windows closed, where you see temperatures go up to 120, 130 degrees in a span of five minutes, and there's no circulating air. We all know that that's very dangerous, not just to animals, but to humans that are in those cars. We don't see numbers like that in our shelter. We do monitor the temperature. We have been now for a while, and we do, we do see temperatures this time of year that go up over 90. So we recognize, you know, that is uncomfortable. It's also uncomfortable for humans. What we don't see and haven't seen is any sort of significant heat-related illness in these animals that we've had. And I just, for my education, looked back, you know, at July 12th, 1998, it was 96 degrees here in Orlando. And undoubtedly, the dogs in that shelter were as hot or hotter than they were today. I think the difference is, again, our community expectation and the way we have changed how we feel about what we want to provide for these animals. And there's no doubt in my mind that if we provide a more comfortable environment for both the animals and the potential adopters and the humans in there, that we're going to continue to see improvement in people's willingness to come and get these animals. So in part, to me, this is less, in my opinion, danger for the animals and more, I think that we can improve the entire process that we're trying to achieve by making this building more inviting and more comfortable for everybody.
Because one of the things I've heard is that the temperature is, you know, generally over like, over 100 degrees. Do you have an average? Is it getting that hot?
Within, within our shelter?
Yeah.
I'd have to ask Mr. Luther. I don't believe we've ever had anything over 100 degrees from our measurements. We have had over 90, we do. We know that that happens this time of year.
I've been calling him. I've been calling him from time to time in the last couple of weeks. Since Pulse, I've been outside a lot in the heat of the day, and knowing just how hot it's been outside, Dill gets, you know, random phone calls, what's the temperature? And he is monitoring it on a regular basis as well. A couple of other things I would point out, that dogs' tolerance for heat depends on certain environmental conditions, the ability to have shade, ventilation, and water, water, water.
Yes.
And without that, without water, without ventilation and shade, their tolerance goes significantly down. So
And I would mention, and I think in response to the individual that came up here, I would agree, an animal that is sick or in a bad way, but we have the ability, because of the clinic area being air-conditioned, that if we do identify that a dog is sick or might not be able to tolerate heat, we can shift animals around as it's, you know, necessary and available to us to do so. So, you know, but I do think that the future is to be able to do this. That's what we see with the new buildings being built. They're all, they're air-conditioned, and I think it's because we see that new pathway that these shelters are taking.
Other questions?
Yeah, I guess just to comment, and that excellent presentation, you know, the analysis of adapting the air conditioning and all that makes a lot of sense. I had a concern whether this would be sufficient to address the concerns of the public, and it sounds like it should be for, you know, the time being. If anything, we might need to educate the public more as to, you know, what the temperatures really are and what we're doing to address that. So it sounds like a very reasonable approach.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the presentation. I was actually out on Saturday at the facility, and I am, we're picking up a new adopted dog tomorrow. It looks as if that's going to happen.
That wasn't the plan, was it?
No.
Congratulations.
It kind of was, you know, when you were open to it.
Okay.
But I will say, I spoke with several of the volunteers, and I really wanted to understand how hot it was. And Saturday was warm.
Yes.
Very warm. And so I absolutely support a temporary upgrade or an immediate upgrade that's, that's, makes sense from a cost standpoint, to make it more comfortable, both for the animals and for the volunteers especially that were there. But I will say, I went across the street to the nonprofit building, and it's a
Heine Society?
Is that who it is?
Headlines, yeah.
And they have tin roofs where their dogs are, and the ventilation was maybe about half of what our ventilation was. And I did notice the difference. Like, if you were looking, you know, you're going to a resort or a hotel, I'd want to stay in our hotel versus one across the street, just because it was more comfortable. So, you know, I think that it's great if we can do something immediate, but my preference would be that we get something into this year's budget, at least for but my preference would be that we get something into this year's budget, at least for design or, you know, the dollars that we can start exploring it. And I think it would also be helpful, because I have a feeling there's a lot of people watching, explaining maybe just real briefly that budget process of why we're talking about October-November, so that it's not that we're dragging our feet. It's just, there's a process that we have to go through. I think that would probably be helpful, because I really believe that, what you've said, Dr. Hunter, just the mindset and just the purpose of the building alone is so different than it was 30 years ago. And we want to be on the leading edge, and I'm on the, you know, catching up behind. I think that our community and our animals and our volunteers and everybody, you know, I think, I think our community is supportive of an air-conditioned facility that's state-of-the-art. And I think, I hope that this board has the wherewithal, and we're ready, because there's, we're getting ready to leave, some of us. And this is something that we can get done in the next couple of years, and I hope to be part of that.
Absolutely. So, and thank you for the question about the budgeting process. The goal would be to put the, just skip somebody, I'm so sorry. The goal would be to put the $300,000 into this year's budget to have the staff come back with what their evaluation and analysis looks like in terms of building a new facility. And in the probably, you know, mid-year, January, we always have a truing up, because we budget conservatively, we usually have excess revenues at that time. We could look at putting in the design costs and then including in the future year's budgets the, the cost of actually building a new shelter. At this point, I can't tell you what that cost is, so it would be premature to even speculate. But that'll give us time to do a full evaluation, but keep this moving in a timely fashion. But it's important to me that we make the improvements that we can make, because it will take time to build the shelter. And it would be wonderful if we can have that built before you and I leave office together. But we'll, we'll get a better read on the timeframe on that.
And I just want to mention, we're ready to start the ventilation project immediately upon approval.
And, okay. And if we can't get it built, then we want a commitment from those of you who are here, that at the grand opening, that we will be there. Okay, so I missed somebody. Who was after Commissioner Clark? But who, thank you, I just jumped over somehow. Go ahead, Commissioner Clark, Commissioner.
No, it was a great conversation. I guess my, my only question, when I pushed the button and I talked to Gee just a moment ago, is it would be the feasibility of, it may be, it may be only possible to reconstruct and build a new facility on its current site. And mosquito control, I understand, is out there as well, from what I remember last time I was there. And, but I didn't know if there were maybe, and I'm sure relocating a potential facility like this anywhere, anywhere around in our community could be like relocating a gun range in somebody's, you know, because with noise and what have you, that maybe generates from these things. But are there other opportunities for other county properties that the site may be able to be relocated to as well, while that facility is currently being used? And, I mean, because it is in a, in a very high-intense developed area. And I don't know what that location, being there, how important that is in relation to
I think that's, that's part of what the staff's going to come back in October and evaluate.
Yeah, we have, we definitely have some ideas already. We want to come back in the fall with a very detailed, with some options. I think right now, we believe that site where it is, is actually an incredible site, is right in the middle. It's a high-traffic area, it's very easy for people to get to. But, but there are challenges to that. As you can see, it's very tight on that property right now. But we're, we're absolutely going to look forward at other properties, other areas. We're going to come back with as many options as we can bring to you guys.
Okay, great. And the, the adoption rates and the amount of volunteers that have been participating and seeing that number increases, is, you guys are doing a great job of that, so thank you.
A lot of that credit goes to Dill Luther, who, you know, he's not up here, but he needs to get it. And obviously, a ton of that credit also goes to our volunteer and rescue organizations and all of our partners.
Absolutely, thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioner, whoops, Commissioner Clark, and I really did.
That's okay.
And then we'll hear from you, Commissioner Thompson.
Yeah, I'm one of the few people here who are at the ribbon-cutting for that facility.
Wow.
So, I mean, I think it was Public Health then, but we had a lot to do with animal control. And, yeah, at that time, it was state-of-the-art. And the old facility, it was over off of Old Warden Garden Road somewhere. I mean, it was, it was brutal. So I think Orange County did the right thing then, we need to do the right thing now. For my first question to Gee yesterday was, well, we're sitting there, we're a millennial, we should be able to sell that property and, you know, be able to really do something good. But, you know, the question is, where do you relocate it? I think that's a legit question. I know at one point in time, we were talking about two facilities. You know, one is satellite facility because of the distances now that the folks have to travel. So maybe we could look at that, maybe this could be repurposed for cats, and, yeah, I don't know. But, you know, another facility, you know, you've got a nice spot out in your district, out there in the woods.
We've got a lot of spots.
We've got a lot of spots. But, you know, I think if we could have a really nice kennel in two spots, I think for the, for the, for the work they have to do and the distances and so forth. But my main question was going to be, you know, with, with all the gear that Dave Freeman has over in his little warehouse, all those huge air conditioners that we attach to tents, you know, when the time comes, is there a way to, when it gets hot, just to blow that air through that facility to lend some cold air, you know, when you do this ventilation project, that you could bring it down a few more degrees? Without compromising the air exchanges? Because it's fresh air coming in.
Yeah, I'd have to defer to Capital Projects to answer that. I can tell you that remarkably enough, those tents are actually built to be air-conditioned, unlike this building. So it makes it a little simpler. I couldn't answer that question off the cuff to know if it would be feasible to just pump that air in or what that would do. I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's just a thought, but, you know, we could also, we may continue it, you know. But I just know he has these big units that can blow a lot of cold air.
Certainly.
And if it's really, really hot, I mean, just to put that in the mix, because it is fresh air, might be a way to do that. And, you know, I'm glad that we're, particularly glad that we're looking at a new facility. And, you know, I would certainly support that, because it is time. That is a very old, old facility, and, you know, that whole complex down there really is well-located. Probably need to look at the entire complex, and maybe we can partner with the Humane Society as well, when the time comes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you want to answer the question? Because that's, you know, that's the thing, I think, all of us, yes, like, is there anything we can do?
Right. Right now, Facilities has already started to install more floor fans, just to help with air movement. And we're going to look at being able to add some more fans as we go through these next warmer months. We will certainly look at that. I do believe we really exhausted every type of air supply like that. But we'll continue to look at things we can do in the short run until we can get the ventilation project underway. We're only, if, since it's been approved, we'll, we'll be about 45 days away from having plans ready to submit and get going on it. So the ventilation project will move forward really quickly.
Commissioner Nelson?
Great, thank you. Couple of quick things. One is, back in the old days, we used to put sprinklers on top of metal buildings, and just in the middle of the hottest part of the day, run a sprinkler on top of a metal roof, and it drops the temperature of that metal roof down to, you know, the, the temperature of the, of the water, you know, for a few seconds. But, but could make a, you know, in the short term, make a difference. But, but longer term, as we look to repurpose this building, if we, if we go into budget and look at building a new building, one of the, I think, programs nationwide that's really been a success is the inmates, using them to, to train dogs for certain levels of, you know, for blind dog trainers. And, and so anyway, there's a, I mean, some, some successes across the country that have just been phenomenal. And as we look to repurpose this building, is that something we could at least put in the back of our mind? Is something that we might want to consider, based on some of the successes we're seeing, you know, across the country?
Certainly. I know we actually have partnered with Corrections in the past to have people come and work with us, with the animals, and basically work with our staff. But absolutely, we're open to any, any sort of idea for programs that we could, you know, improve the use of it. I think with a, you know, beginning with the thought of a new facility, like I said, there's a lot of different programming and things that we would like to see change and improve, or, you know, the way our general approach is to veterinary, you know, to veterinary medicine and things like that. I think that, starting with the new facility, it's just adopting to this mindset that this is what we are going forward, is a, is a big, big change for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, is, who would like to make a motion? Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Thompson, seconded by Commissioner Clark, to move the requested action. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And in addition to the requested action, the staff will be bringing back to us in the timeframe of October-November, a full evaluation of how we would move forward with building a new facility, including where it would be and the options for that, so the board can take that into consideration. And, and hopefully, we'll have a budget item to consider in January. Thank you all. With that, you all took up open discussion, I understand?